Let's call the Powhatan Board of Supervisors workshop from March 30th to order. Mr. Tucker, will you lead us in the pledge and Mr. Hodges can lead us in vacation? Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Join your heads. Tony Father, we just thank you for this time to come together and do the people's business. Lord, we just pray you give us wisdom to make good decisions and give us wisdom also to look to the future and plan accordingly so that we can plan for the needs, but also at the same time, Lord, that we understand the restraints of our citizens. And also, we just pray that you be with those who are traveling to and from our meeting, see and give them traveling mercies, and also be with those first responders that could use a service even when we're going about our own business in the county or conducting this meeting. For all these things in your name. Amen.
Do we have any requests to postpone, delete, add, change the order of any of the agenda If not, can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
So, no, Mr. Chairman.
The second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
This time we have our first public comment period. Please limit your, if you're an individual, please limit your comments to three minutes. If you're a group, please try to stay around five minutes. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman. Bob Marcello, Petersburg Road. Thank you. I just wanted to say tonight, one more request to be conservative in your decisions and to really consider the, where we're going in the bigger picture. My comments the other week were that Powhatan debt per citizen is up to 2,900 from 900 per citizen in the last 10 years. The state is now at 9,000 debt per capita. So if you add just state and local, we're over, quick math, is about $12,000 per citizen. And the trend for taxes is up. And I know a thing or two about this because we did some calculations for the last Attorney General. The Governor McAuliffe went to the rating agencies to have a discussion with them, and that's typically a sign when a head of state or a finance minister or governor gets called in, it's a warning that the down tick is coming in the ratings. So I would urge caution and balance because what's coming in the future, we don't know. We have risk points, and I'd like to appeal for conservatism in trying to figure out how to do things with debt that we know we all need. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Marcello. Anyone else wishing to speak?
Good evening. I guess I'm supposed to say my name. It's Connie Maslow, and I'm the Director of the Free Clinic, and I do live in Powhatan. Good evening, all of you on the stage and all of you down here. Number one, I'd like to thank you and the board for all the in-kind services that you have provided for the clinic, but I am here tonight to ask you for the additional funding for the Free Clinic in Powhatan. We've served over 1,000 patients since we started the clinic seven years ago. We provide medical, dental, mental health, women's health, and patient coordinating services. We register still an average of two patients a week, so meaning that at the end of the year, we have another 100 patients that come to the Free Clinic. For the senior populations, we buy dentures, we buy glasses, this is to no cost to the senior population or to any of the people in the clinic. We have an annual budget of a quarter of a million dollars a year, $250,000 a year, which is, all this money has to be raised by the clinic. We receive no federal money and no county money. We do receive some money through the General Assembly, depending on how much they are going to give that year, but all other monies have to be raised by the county. For some unknown reason, the Free Clinic has got categorized as an organization, we're not an organization, we're, you know, we are definitely a human needs concern, just as much as social services, community services, or community action. We provide life-saving medical services to the population, the low-income uninsured and underinsured population in Powhatan County. Without the clinic, these people have no place to go, no place. The clinic is the home where they seek medical care. So I'm asking you to please consider helping to fund the clinic. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Maslow. Anyone else wishing to speak, please come forward. If not, I'll close the public comment period. We'll move on to 7A, discussion item.
This item is found on page three of your agenda. There's an agenda statement there. I'm going to have Chief Steve Singer introduce the group that met and did the specifications and the negotiations on the fire vehicle. Thank you, Chief.
Right. Chairman, board members here tonight, we had gathered a committee back after appropriations were made in December to specify the specifications for our fire tanker that was approved, and I'd like to bring the group forward here, especially Taylor Goodman, the Assistant Chief at the Huguenot Station. He's the one that headed up the committee. He'll give you some information. And Chief Warner. And these are the rest of the members here from Company Two who served on the committee. And let me tell you, they went through nuts and bolts down to every little line of specifications, cutting everything that they could to get us down to a good, financially responsible but a good vehicle that I believe will serve us well. Mr. Taylor? Goodman?
All right. Board members, Mr. Chairman, appreciate a few minutes tonight. I'm here at the request of Fire Administration as well as the County Administrator to just give a brief idea of where we came from. This is obviously a very significant expenditure, so want to give everybody some understanding on that. So about two years ago, through our five-year planning process, we started the process to specify a new tanker to replace the 1992 model that Huguenot is currently operating. About a year out from that, we really started in earnest, developing those specifications. And at that time, we also brought in a representative from Fine Creek Fire Company Four over on Route 711, as they may stand if the funding comes through, to get a tanker as well. And we thought it would be financially prudent to bring them onboard, meet the needs of both departments, and make sure that we didn't have to spend any extra time on a specification process for a second vehicle that could be purchased in a short timeframe together. Based on my experience with fire apparatus purchasing, purchased about 10 vehicles here in the county since about 2000, and the career fire department that I work for full-time, I've purchased about 60 vehicles, came in as the chairman and brought in a number of folks who I'd like to recognize briefly, Dennis Llewellyn, Brandon Johnson, Floyd Green, Troy Blair, Chief Don Houtsma, as well as our representative from Fire Administration, Phil Water. We worked earnestly together as a committee to develop the specifications. When the specifications went out, under the HGAC purchasing process, which you may or may not be familiar with, but that allows us to do competitive bidding, but it's actually done through a pre-established pricing structure, somewhat like the GSA is for federal purchases and things of that nature. Based on that, we selected four vendors. Those four vendors were selected based on presentations they gave to us ahead of time, as well as our knowledge of their product and their dealer support network. Three vendors of the four that were selected ended up turning in a proposal to us, and unfortunately, all of those proposals were tens of thousands of dollars over the budgeted amount that we have. So our committee spent probably somewhere in the neighborhood of 18 to 20 hours going line by line on every single item, working with those vendors to say, hey, where can we have some price savings? What do you recommend for price savings? You know your product and things like that. And after it was all done, we actually brought the price of the vehicle down by somewhere between $70,000 and $80,000. And by doing that, we were able to get a vehicle that will still be very mission-critical, very mission-specific, do all those things we need to, while at the same time, getting it below budget far enough that we can actually purchase the equipment for it without having to do that as a separate line item or come back and ask for additional monies or a line item in the following budget year and things like that. So that was ultimately our goal. And at the end of that, we, the recommendation was made to purchase the vehicle through a company called Red Storm Fire Apparatus, which is based out of Gainesville, Virginia, and Prince William County. They do have local representation in Chesterfield. And the product would be built by the Smee Corporation, which is based out of Snyder, Nebraska. And after we did a lot of our own research and fact-finding, we got very, very positive reviews on the Smee product and feel very confident and recommending to the board that we move forward on the purchase of the Smee product through Red Storm Fire Apparatus.
In addition to that, I wanted to point out that the other thing that the group negotiated is that if the county will put down $125,000 down, there will be a savings of $13,123,000. So we are taking advantage of that. There is a typo on your agenda statement on page three. If you look under Budget Fiscal Impact, the fire tanker is $476,236. That leaves $23,764 for the equipment, for the total of what you've budgeted and appropriated, which is the $500,000. It would be a capital lease of $351,236,000. As I mentioned, there would be a down payment of $125,000 coming from the Capital Maintenance Reserve, and the equipment purchase of $23,764 would also come out of the Capital Maintenance Reserve. So the action that we would be asking for you on a week from tonight would be the resolution that you see on page four of the agenda, which is to change the appropriation, which you had $500,000 appropriated in lease proceeds. We would change that so that the lease proceeds would be $351,236, and then the amount coming from cash would be the $148,764. We're also asking you then to authorize the County Administrator to sign all the documents. So this time, we'd like to turn it over to the board to ask questions, and I personally want to thank the volunteers and our staff that worked so hard to bring that price down, to bring it in, in the budget that the county allotted. I know you spent a lot of hours, so thank you very much.
Questions of Mr. Goodman or staff at this time?
Comment, Mr. Chairman? Thank you for a very articulately done presentation and very succinct. We appreciate it. I think whichever way we go on this request, this is the kind of to-the-point analytical processes and looking really hard at the bottom line. I commend you for, all of you, for what you did to make it easier for us to make a decision, whichever way that decision is. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Questions? Okay. Mr. Goodman, thank you very much and the rest of your group for doing this. I will say, I've known you for a long time, seen you grow.
Yes, sir.
I remember when you were in high school, and so I see you today standing in front of us as a nice thing to see, as you continue to grow and mature, and thank you for what you do for our county and the citizens of our county and the rest of your group. Thank you, too. We certainly appreciate that.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, board members.
Next, we'll move on to item 6B.
This item is found on page 10 of your agenda. Charlotte Schubert will be making the presentation. This is a recommendation that came forward to us from our county clerk, Teresa Dobbins, and it is another idea that came from Teresa by doing the research and finding out ways that the county could collect more funds. And she had mentioned this at her budget presentation two weeks ago. So, Charlotte, thank you.
All right. Chairman of the Board, members, this is, per the Virginia Code, Section 17.1-281, currently we're charging the $2 per civil action to, for courthouse maintenance. In order to charge the additional three, up to $3 more per civil criminal, I believe it's criminal traffic case, the board has to authorize the County Administrator to submit an application and a facility evaluation to the Department of General Services. They will then come out, determine whether our courthouse has needs for renovation, security updates, anything that's not up to courthouse code per se. And if the courthouse can't be feasibly renovated to correct the non-compliance, then you, that's when you can actually adopt the ordinance to, up to $3 more, we would hold that money in order to use that money for the renovations and security upgrades that they feel the courthouse needs. So that's what we're presenting, is for the County Administrator to be able to sign the application and send off the facility evaluation that Teresa Dobbins has helped us prepare. They will then send someone out to actually evaluate the courthouse. It does, the county does have to pay a small fee to the state for that evaluation.
And if you look on page 10 of your agenda statement, under Budget Impact, it is blank. However, on page 24 is an email from the state letting us know that the maximum amount that they would charge us is $1,700. And once we know the exact amount, we'll come back to you and ask you to use contingency for that evaluation if you approve us to go forward. This is an action item that we're bringing forward to you on April 6th, next week.
Yes, next week.
Mr. Chairman, a question. So, Ms. Schubert, does the money collected go into an escrow fund and does accumulate?
Yes, we would probably set up-
Is that, it doesn't go into a general fund? It's got to be used specifically.
Yes.
You mark it as such.
Exactly, yes. We would have to track it, and we would do that in the Finance Office.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Any other questions? So we could address, you know, looking at the facility, Department of General Services evaluation, the one that was provided to us was a lot of no's and many needs.
Those were actually done by Teresa evaluated, and then you send that off, and they will come back and in turn do their own evaluation. But based on her needs and what she sees every day, this is where we are deficient.
It was pretty telling, if you want to use that term, to show that we needed some upgrades and some improvements done, and Sally Port was one of those that was on there, so.
Yes, sir.
I'm in favor of this. Thank you for bringing it forward to us. Any other questions? Okay, thank you. At this time, we're going to change a little bit since we have a gentleman here who can present. We're going to actually handle 7E at this point, Classification and Compensation Plan, and we'll let Ms. Pat handle it with Mr. Knowles.
Thank you. First, I'd like to draw your attention that in your budget book, we have added, page 3-13, all the way through 3-38, so if you go to tab 3, what you're going to find on the first pages of tab 3 is a copy of the report that you also have in front of you on the dais from Condry and Associates. Tonight, we have with us a representative of Condry and Associates, Mark Knowles, and we contracted with Condry to do the job in classification plan, and Mr. Knowles is going to present their final report to you. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Knowles. Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you, Mr. Chairman, and members of the board. I'll refer to this booklet here that you have in front of me and use this, these page numbers to guide you along in the process. Just quickly, my name is Mark Knowles, and I'm a principal consultant with Condry and Associates. I've served with Dr. Condry in some capacity for about 27 years now, doing classification and pay analysis work and organizational analysis in just over 30 different states around the country. What you've asked us to do, just as a reminder, on page one is to take, was to take a look at your current classification system and pay plan for all of county employees. So it wasn't just one department, but for the entire organization. It's not something uncommon. Most organizations will take this, undertake this sort of review about every 10 years on average. The primary goal is to make sure that your job descriptions are up to date and reflective of what people are actually being asked to do, so they understand what's expected, and you, as stewards, understand what you're asking from them. And also to make sure that the compensation plan, that the amount of money that's tied to each of those jobs is, has a couple of features to it. One, that it's internally equitable, that people who are doing similar things are paid in similar ways, doesn't mean they all are paid the same, but in similar ranges, and that externally is competitive. So when you go to a higher position, you're able to attract someone, and whenever you get them here, you're able to keep them. So you asked us to look at, to tell you that by, first, also looking at the salary data that's out there in the marketplace, and then to come back and produce a recommended pay plan that's based not just on salary, but also on job analysis and job evaluation, and of course, that wage survey data. The process that we use was not something radical or anything, it's established methodology. It's a process that, first, you ask employees to tell you about the position. There was a detailed survey that was handed out to every employee within the organization. They took those seriously. We came on site and gave some guidance, but they took them seriously and gave us some very good quality information. That information we reviewed at different levels, and then we came on site, actually, and interviewed just over 50% of all individuals that work for you, at least one person in every position, to get firsthand knowledge of those positions. And we did that with the use of some subject matter experts who have knowledge of those jobs, who have been around those jobs. An average term of service for anybody within our organization is about 25 years, and I think the youngest person on our team has some 18 years' experience working in and around local government. The process also involved, after we gathered that, we, you know, we built new job descriptions based on the information. We had a technical writer who's now delivered those job descriptions to you, but we use that information to go in and to do a fact, something called the Factor Evaluation System, which is really the foundation of human resource management in the United States. And the concept is there's 10 factors that may make up most jobs. In each job, there's, each factor has specific levels associated with that, and those levels are given in points. Those points add up and provide you a natural breaking point within your organization to allow you to sign a compensation schedule. You know, it's not a pure science, it's a social science, so there's room for movement in there as necessary as we go forward, and it's going to require you, even after this presentation here and what we've done so far, to make adjustments occasionally based on new duties that are assigned or refocused in individuals' jobs. You'll see on page three, the actual organizations that we surveyed in your market, the organizations you defined as your specific market. And then, of course, we tested that with Bureau of Labor Statistics. Of course, private companies typically would not report their data to an organization, but they are required to report it to the federal level under the Bureau of Labor Statistics. So you're able to get that in aggregate, and we could test that. But you also, in local government markets, are typically a little bit lower, so you want to peg somewhere close to that where your local area are, and these are the organizations that you consider your market. Maybe a couple are a little larger than you, and maybe a couple are a little small, but on aggregate, we believe this is a very good mix of organizations for you to compare to. On the classification system itself, if you look on page 11, you'll see how individual positions fill out in terms of the grade by department, and then we organize those positions as well by grouping them by the grades themselves, so you can group those together. And we've shared this with each department head and constitutional officer, and then more information will be shared this week as it goes out to everybody within the organization, but we want to make sure you got it as quickly as we could first before everyone sees it as a whole. And in the future, there'll be opportunities, once you adopt something, for them, for us to step back in, and, you know, if there's an error somewhere, we'll make a correction for individuals. But that's typically not to, a little bit, time in the future. You'll see all those positions, and each of those titles of those positions, we saw them in the actual grade itself, whether you read this, the department code, we just coded for technical purposes, on the left-hand side, we give each a position number, and then we give a position title, and then the grade itself is shown there. And we came up with a system which has 26 total grades, from grades 1 through 26. Generally, grades 1 through 4, you reserve for your part-time positions, you know, they're built off a minimum wage scale up, and then your technical, your full-time positions start grading out at a grade 5 on a scale like this, all the way to grade 6. And what you try to do when you first, when you come up and you implement a new plan, you have to bring everybody at least to the minimum of the scale that we're seeing as the market, we try to peg that to market. And so you have some costs that are associated with setting up a new plan. And if you look at on page, I'm going to skip ahead a little bit here, but on page 10, you'll start seeing some costs, and I'm going to explain to you how we got those costs. Each of those, each of those positions were graded using FES, and on page 4, we list what those levels are, but knowledge required by the position, supervisory control, guidelines, complexity, scope and effect, personal contacts, purpose of contacts, physical demands, and work environment. Those are the nine factors that are commonly found with all organizations. At the local government level, we will add a 10th factor, and that's supervisory control, primarily because we give supervision at a much lower level in most organizations, even to a point of a crew leader, lead worker type capacity, and we accommodate for that within your organization for internal equity purposes. And then those grades, up to grade 26 through, from, excuse me, 5 through up to 26, that's how we get to that, using those 10 factors and those levels within those. Just quickly, one of those factors, for example, is knowledge required by the position. And so some positions have no knowledge requirements, that would be a Level 1, all the way up to maybe potentially a master's degree or postgraduate degree at a Level 7. And each of those levels have those points assigned to them, and they're built up. And it is a weighted system, so it's weighted more toward knowledge than other positions, but other factors, but all the factors do weigh in at one point. Okay? And I know I'm going through some of this in a little bit more depth, but the good thing about this is, this is in the public realm, it's not something we invented, it's been around 50-plus years. Anybody here can Google it, they can get more information. It's not something that's foreign, it's somewhat easy to understand. And in fact, we've done a little training this afternoon, and we'll be here to train over the next year, others, to understand how to use it. But it's not, it's good because people, the first thing you learn is that people want to understand how you come up with a grade on a position, and they want to understand how that was done, so it's not just pulled out of the air. It's a good system, it brings structure to a somewhat political environment, and allows for some reason. The compensation plan itself, when we measure, we basically go out and do an average of the average of positions, and that allows you to define a marketplace. And then we could say, we could peg your new scale to that, once we assign all of these individual positions on that scale. And we're presenting to you three different proposal plans. One is at 100% of the market, or match to market policy. And the other two are slightly below, or lag policies. There's not a, there's not a right or wrong answer in how you determine what your pay scale should be, it's really your pay philosophy of your organization. And most organizations do try to match to market when they're able to do that. So we present that to you, and we want to share with you the cost of doing both of those. Every year, though, you'd want to go in and you want to adjust that to some factor, so you still peg your overall pay system to a market. The Employment Cost Index is one measure that's commonly used, it's not CPI, but the employment cost of that individual part, and that's something that you can pull out for just your region, and you don't, not using a national scale, it's just your local area, and those statistics are pretty good for you to use and to peg to that. But, you know, you tie that to a somewhat conservative approach where you, when the funds are available, you do that. It's not something that's required as policy. Okay? And you'll see on page, page 6, 7, and 8, and if you're right at the top, page 6 is 100%, page 7 is 98. Oh, wait, I'm sorry, I'm doing this backwards. Somebody put these in here backwards for me, this is the first time they've done it the way. So actually, page 6 is 97, and if you, the way I can, I'm sorry, I am getting a little fumbled, I had to write them.
Page 6 is 100%.
We had it back, I had to write them. And the way you can see, the way you can tell this, so I don't lose my place too much, is on 11, grade 11, there, the minimum level, one is a $33,000 scale, is what we refer to as a $33,000 scale. The entire scale pivots around that number. Okay? And you say you peg, those are where most positions within an organization would traditionally fall out in terms of number of people, so you build a scale around that for internal equity purposes. So the first one is a $33,000 scale, the second one at 98% is a $32,500 scale, and then the third one at 97% is a $32,000 scale. Okay? And as you have funds, and when you budget and you have to make decisions, you generally try to stick with that number, when you move your scale, you move that number, and it keeps internal equity within the organization in place. So that's how you kind of, once you determine how much you want to spend on the, really want some of the most important parts of your decision-making, human resource management of your organization. And as you look on page 10 now, and if we can, if we can use this in a way to flip back and forth, and I'm going to focus on table 2A, simply because that's the highest of the scales we present, and we'll just look at an individual position, and we'll look at potentially, I'll just pull one directly out, a crime analyst in the Sheriff's Department. It comes out at grade 12. So the first thing you do is you look at grade 12, and we recommend a minimum level salary of $34,650. So we want to make sure that any individual within that grade is at least that minimum. Okay? And the cost of doing that is referred to as your classification change. Okay? So that, on page 10, that first column, for each of these scenarios, the first part, we'll focus on the first top part first, and I'll tell you the difference between the first section and the modified section in just a minute, but both of those, on the classification change, you'll see it's 1.53% of your total payroll cost before any benefits or any other calculations. Okay? That's your base payroll cost. It's going to cost you $102,428 to implement this plan. Okay? And if you go, and as you step down on Plan B and Plan C, it drops, but not proportionally. As we, as I said earlier, it's 100%, 98%, and 97%. So get, to get a scale that's 3% higher than the bottom, 97% up to 100, there's really only about a six-tenth of a percent difference, about 60 basis points. And of that, to do that would cost, gets you a 3% higher scale. If you come back next year and you were to adopt that lower one, to move your scale to the market, it would cost you 3% at that point. So the more you're able to do when you initially set up a classification and pay plan, the better you are. Okay? Within bounds, so it's a balance of back and forth. So just as a, as a rule for, as a steward, that's something that you should remember. These are the costs of that, and for all the, we've calculated this for the entire organization. Also, when you, when you first- Also, when you first do this, what'll happen, you'll find that you're bringing certain positions directly up to the actual market, where you might have somebody who's really at the entry level of that grade, that's also been here for a couple of years. So you create something that's called pay compression. So you try not to do that, it creates a...
Mr. Knowles, I have an emergency. Please continue presenting to these guys.
Yes, sir.
Please, please continue.
And I'll leave my number if you have any questions you could contact. Yes, sir. Thank you. Okay. We're good, everybody good? Okay? No questions? And so you try to alleviate that pay compression to some extent. It's not a requirement by any means, but it does make good policy processes for your organization. And you do a one-time equity adjustment. And there's a couple of ways to do that, and we've looked at it, we've analyzed it. And the first way, the preferred way, is we use a 2-4-6 method. And basically, we take, we have to take an indicator, and in this type of a study, the only thing we're able to do is to look and see how long an individual's been employed with you. I can't really, in 15-minute interviews, I can't tell you how well somebody does their job or anything. This has nothing to do with the individual, but just as a method to ease compression. And so we recommend that, on the bottom there, on the footnote, as you read that, from one to three years of service, you make a 2% adjustment for all the individuals, moving them into that grade in a percentage-wise. So you're spreading them out just a little bit in the grade. If somebody's been here for four to six years, it's a 4%. And then, seven years or more, it's a 6%. And then we, if that, if we see the cost there is about 4 and 1/4, really about 4.2% for each of those methods. And if that's not something that's desirable, then we, as I said, maybe a modified version, at least you're doing something to try to address that. And we use a 1, 2, and, excuse me, 1, 3, and 5 percentage. Let's make sure I got the numbers right. No, I'm sorry, 1, 2, and 3. So 1% from 1 to 3 years, 2% from 4 to 6 years, and 3%, 7 or more. This is not something uncommon, and that's why I'm maybe fumbling the numbers just a little bit, because every other organization typically does something like this when you first implement it. It's a best practice recommendation. And it alleviates any issues of compression, or some, most issues of compression as you move forward. And you still may have a couple of issues that you might have to address a little later on, but you'll be, that you'll have taken care of 99% of most everything there. Okay? And then you find in the third column, the last column, the total implementation cost for the entire project, if you were to take both of those. And we don't calculate that as a percentage just yet, because your equity adjustment's where you have some room to, if you really want to make sure you do the classification change part, but the equity adjustment, you may direct staff into to do something different, or they may have to come up with another scenario. So we leave that open at this point in time. But these are two preferred methods to try to address that. Okay? And with that, I will stop, and I will be available to answer specific questions, and there's a lot of information, very quickly.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Williams.
I would love to have had this information, not days in advance, but weeks in advance, so I could ask you some good questions tonight. But I'll be honest with you, trying to follow what you were sharing with us and going through the book at the same time, I found it very difficult. That's my first statement. My second statement is, are you available to come back for a workshop?
Yes, sir. We actually are contractually, this is your first presentation, and we're contractually obligated for a whole year to assist you in implementation. So that's not something that is not unusual. And I would not expect you to grasp all this in one session. This is the first presentation.
Okay. I'm going to recommend that. I don't know how many workshops it's going to take, because, you know, we need to understand this. And a lot of the information that you're giving to us is totally new. So that's my first comment. And notice in here that you did, what is it, compensation with other localities around You compared us to, I believe it was Henraco, Chesterfield, Hanover, and some of the other large jurisdictions. I didn't see Amelia, I didn't see Cumberland. I did see Goochland, but I didn't see those two counties. Is there a reason?
We would have, we would have used the organizations that you provided to us. Not all of them will respond to a survey, and I don't have the list of everyone you asked, but not all of them will respond. Here are the respondents. And I believe it was around a 76% response rate.
Yeah. I see here where it says, "survey respondents."
Yes, sir.
That could be it.
Yeah. In addition, at this level, statistically speaking, if I get just, if I get a couple more, it will not significantly move the scale at this point. You have a valid sample size to adjust. And also, we're building the scale, as you can see, from grade one, it really is, it's at a minimum wage level scale. I mean, we're just slightly above minimum wage, from grade one up.
Do you take into account turnover rates or things like that, in coming up with your salary compensation, and what you think is appropriate?
No, sir, we do not.
Do other localities take that in consideration? Because we're all in competition, supposedly.
No, sir. It would not be a normal practice for us when we set, when any organization pegs to the market for, on an internally equitable scale, for us to consider that kind of information.
If I wanted to look at what you proposed tonight to us, where would I go to another locality to see it in place in similar form?
Yes, sir. You would, most organizations nowadays will publish this information on the web. If you look at the human resource page of that county, you generally can ask for their pay and class plan, and you should be able to download that.
So is what you're proposing similar, same to the other localities that, you know, responded to your request for information?
It's an average of the average. About half of them are ahead of you, and about half of them are below you.
No, I'm talking about the actual system with the pay steps and things like that, that you're proposing that we adopt.
Yes, sir. The point factor system is accepted methodology. It's not something radical at all. It's accepted in most local governments. I would not be able to name you, a local government doesn't use a system like this at this point in time. Or any state, and all federal agencies use a system like this. It brings a reasoned process, a reasoned way of doing things to a political environment.
Okay. Thank you. That's the questions I have right now. But again, I would like to see something, if you have a guide, you know, some type of executive summary that you can provide us in advance of next time we get together, summarizing your talking points tonight, that would be helpful as well.
Be glad to, yes, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. Any other questions?
Mr. Chairman. I'll save my questions for the workshop. That's a lot of information to digest quickly, and orally, I think I was keeping up with about 2/3 of it, maybe. So, but I'll save my questions for the workshop. I'm glad that we at least have it. Thank you.
Go ahead, Ms. Tucker.
Having done these before, myself, at Philip Morris, which, as you know, is a very large organization, this is textbook. There's nothing unusual here. This is right out of a textbook, so right on, spot on, as far as I'm concerned.
Yep. And having sat in a few of these in my day in the corporate world, the factor method is, you know, something that's used in the private sector also. It's a weighted system. So just so I understand, so you took the counties that you receive respondents from, and that's, you used, so you'll capture the large, for lack of a better word, the large counties and their pay scales, and you capture the small counties and their pay scales, and you rolled all that together to come up with an average?
Yes, sir. An average of the average. It is also helpful that you include any organization that you would be competing with, just to see where they're at. If they were, if they deviated too much, we would have removed them.
Right.
We do a lot of analytics behind this. This is a high-level look at this. So we pull them out, anyway, to start off with. So if they're above 20% of the mean, you know, you just don't want to use that information anyway.
So, and then determining the classifications of each department. For instance, planning director is a grade 24. You did interviews with their staff, talked with them, and then determined a pay grade scale from there. Did you use other county pay scales, grades, to kind of guide you at all? Or is that something that you strictly did by discussing with our people?
The first thing we do is we ask the employee to tell us about their job in a very detailed level. What they've provided in writing is the best information that you can get. And then an individual would sit down and interview, I think in planning, it was a public works expert, Mr. Eddie Hahn has some 30-plus years' experience in this line of work. And he helped make sure that that employee was telling us what they needed to tell us.
Okay. So there was kind of a second?
And then even a third.
A check after, yeah. A third after that. Because some people talk about their job in, it's just a mundane, everyday job, and some people use a bunch of adjectives and seem to sell themselves a little better. So I'm glad there was kind of a double check and a third check, so to speak. Thank you.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Thanks for the presentation. Just for the record, I followed 3/3 of everything you said, so, sorry. Hey, I do have a basic question in here. It does say that this is a plan, all right? So I'm looking at this, and I'm seeing, I'm going to use voter registrar and deputy voter registrar as examples, because it's one of the smallest categories, so it'll make the point without getting too deep. And nobody has to really turn there, it's just an example, but...
Page 13.
This is a recommendation for what grade that a voter registrar and a deputy voter registrar would be. And I'm on page 13.
13.
Okay, 13. So that, that's a recommendation for the pay grade and the compensation. Okay? Is this in any way a recommendation of how many people should be in the voter registrar department, so to speak, in that office? Are you saying that these are the two that Powhatan County needs? Or are we saying, you know, could there be four people in this office, three of them with the same description, let's say, deputy voter registrar? How does that work?
No, sir. You did not ask us to look at staffing levels at all. So we would not recommend that this position be there, or not recommend that it not be there. We came here, we took a snapshot of your existing funded organization.
Okay.
And we said, this is what this employee is doing. The title that's assigned to it is the commonly-used title for the position.
Okay.
In local government, they almost always wear multiple hats. So FES allows us to accommodate, even if you have a specific title, if they're doing a little bit more here or a little bit less than another organization, that grade might be a little bit higher here or a little bit lower here.
Okay.
And so the grade itself is built for internal equity purposes, so all 14 should be somewhat similar within your organization. That position may be graded differently at a different organization.
Okay. Follow-up question. Let's say we were considering hiring a third person in the voter registrar office, and it would not be the voter registrar, and it would not be a deputy voter registrar, it would be something lesser, you know, a brand-new starting salary, say. Can you help us determine what classification that would be, should we decide to add somebody to that department?
Yes, sir. In fact, this afternoon, I met with your HR staff, and provided them a method of how, what we use, and explained to them the detail. But in that case there, a new individual would complete a, first, actually, their supervisor would complete a survey, and then that survey would be used to draft a new job description. We will be helping you for at least a year, but we, I've been working with the same client that we first started with 21 years ago, so, when I first started doing this. So it's very common, we commonly help you. And then you don't, that would become back before you, and then you would be required to approve that, and then, then you would go out and hire to do that job. So it would be a long, it would be a process that would be involved before you even got to a point where it's graded.
So somebody from a department would come before the board and say, "We're requesting this position for the next fiscal year." And the determinant on what we would be expected to pay that person depends on this right here?
Yes, sir. So if a junior person might be a grade nine or a grade eight, and then you would look at the scale of grade eight or grade nine, and that would be the amount that you would try to offer within that range.
And then if we had a question about that, we can call you.
That's correct.
Okay.
And I should say, I've been doing this 28 years, I have to correct that.
Rookie.
I'm not sure.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Norvik. I think, to kind of follow up a little bit, we, you know, their county administrator encourages, and we have adopted a staffing plan. So, you know, we have staffing plans that would dictate the number of employees. I think the modification of the staffing plan would have to come to the county administrator for a recommendation to her first, then she would bring it to the board to amend the staffing plan. This pay scale stuff would be then determined through HR or through HR and then the county administrator, determination, and then come back.
And actually, I'm trying to figure out how this feathers into that. That's kind of where I was going. Okay?
As a follow-up, we would very much like to have an analysis of our staffing levels, but we weren't able to afford that part of the contract. And so that's why we did not do that. But if at any time the board saw fit to allow us to do a staffing level analysis, we would very much like to do that. I think it's very beneficial to do that, but it is also, there's a cost to doing that.
Okay. Thanks.
Any other questions? Mr. Knowles?
I would like to thank Condry, because they, first of all, in order to get this to the board by March 30th, they shortened their timeframe for when they normally do it, based on when we contracted with them. We normally, they normally would have had this to a client about the end of April, and we said, "We need it before then, we need it by, no later than March 30th." So we've known all along that we would get the plan on March 30th. However, one of their key consultants has been in the hospital for over six, eight weeks, and so they were short-staffed. So I just want to thank them that, even though they were down one consultant, they still met the deadline of our contract and did get this to us, I think it was Saturday morning when we received this. And so they did get it so that we could present it tonight as we had originally planned in the budget calendar. So thank you very much for doing that.
Well, thank you.
Mr. Knowles, thank you for your presentation. I'm sure we'll look forward to some workshops and further discussion on this matter.
Thank you, Chairman. I would say one last thing is, you know, this was an update of a system that you currently are using, more or less. And, you know, the numbers that you see here show that you've been doing a very good job at staying close to the market. So at 1.5%, that's a modest adjustment, comparatively speaking, from around the country.
Well, thank you.
And also, I wanted to let the board know that I did discuss this concept that we are doing with Dr. Jones, so that I could understand how this compares with what Dr. Jones is doing. And the first step that Condry has recommended, which is, let me get what Condry, which Condry calls the "classification changes," which all that does is bring people up to the minimum of the grade. On the school side, they already have everyone at or above the minimum of the grade, and what they're doing is that second step, which is the equity adjustment. I clarified that with Dr. Jones. They're doing an equity adjustment. We still have a step to go before we could get to the equity adjustment, which is the "classification changes," bringing everyone up to the minimum of the grade. So, thank you very much, Dr.
Thank you, Pat. Thank you, Mr. Knowles. At this time, we'll go back to 7C.
7C is the Board of Supervisors' Request for Information. And as stated on the agenda, it was distributed, it's in front of you on the dais, it looks like this, it has a lot of yellow marks on it, about this thick. This is the same format that you saw before, and in fact, if we did distribute it, we've redistributed the information, so you don't have to flip back and forth between two handouts. All of the information is here in front of you. So if you've already seen it before, I would not, I'm not going to spend a lot of time on it unless you have a question. So starting with item number one, we already had that meeting. Items number two, the calculation was provided to you before of the local school support, and Eric Jones provided you the information for 2B, 3, and 4. That was provided before.
before. And the next one is item number three, this is new, and it is found on page seven. You had asked for the B poll rates, first we've asked for the B poll classification, and then the B poll rates from the surrounding jurisdictions. This was prepared by our Commissioner of Revenue, Jamie Timberlake, and he is here if you have questions on this. It is found on page seven.
One there?
No.
It's seven of this handout right here.
Oh, okay.
Everything is in this handout staple.
Thank you.
So page seven of this handout.
Okay, got it.
Okay. On number six and seven, those are ongoing, meaning you've asked us to look at policy. So if it says ongoing, it means there's no backup in here because it's something that will take a while for us to do. Number eight, the SRP calculation is found on page eight, you've already seen that. Nine A, the list of phones is found on page nine, you've already seen that. So I'm going down to page twenty-one, which is ensure that there's no duplication of the services between extension services and YMCA, we already distributed that. Twenty-two, item twenty-two is found on page twelve, that was also previously distributed. And on page twenty-four, this is a new handout, it's on page thirteen, analysis of the services provided to the elderly population by the nonprofits proposed to be funded, and ensure there's no duplication. So if you return to page thirteen, if you notice, the first thing that we checked off, which was item number one, is are they indeed providing services to the elderly? So that was the first thing that we wanted to make sure, that yes, they are providing services to the elderly. And then items two through ten talk about the detailed services that they provide, and there's only two duplications. And number four, both Senior Connections and Feed More provide meals to the seniors, and so I asked Feed More for an explanation. And then separately today, I saw representatives, we had a meeting at three-thirty with representatives of Senior Connections, verified independently that what Feed More told me was the case, and that is Senior Connection contracts with Feed More to provide meals on wheels to the elderly. So that's why Senior Connection shows it as providing home-delivered meals, and Feed More also does the same thing because they contract with them. We were talking with Senior Connections, and they say whenever there is a provider in the locality rather than duplicating services, they will contract with that already existing provider. And then the other duplicate that we found is number ten, disease prevention for seniors with both Senior Connections and extension services, and that is explained in Kathy Howland's memo, that they do do specifically diabetes training. So that was item number...
Twenty-four.
Twenty-four. On item number twenty-seven, this is information provided...
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman, I've got a question.
Yes, sir.
Pat?
Yes, sir.
Do you mean that both of those services, they each provide diabetes prevention, is that it?
At Senior Connections, it wasn't specific which, that they, which disease, at extension services specifically, they provide diabetes.
So it maybe duplication, may not?
May not, I don't know that.
Okay.
Yes.
Senior Connections does not do it here, they do some of the stuff downtown. So we've got a problem with transportation.
Thank you.
You have to go to their Cary Street office to get this kind of training.
Okay, good, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Norvick.
So item number twenty-seven is an update of the sheriff's slide, that's found on page fifteen. On page fifteen is, first on page fourteen is a memorandum from the sheriff, and then fifteen is information provided by the sheriff. First, the population, and then the difference between comp board and county funded and total positions, and then the number of employees per thousand citizens. There's more information that you had asked for, it's coming later in, on the list that we'll get to, Mr. Norvick. On twenty-eight is how do local jurisdictions pay or reimburse their volunteer fire companies and volunteer rescue squads? That's found on page seventeen. And this tells you how individuals do it, and it's my understanding that none of them pay them a rent as we do. That was a mechanism that we came up with to support the volunteers. And on page eighteen is the information that you requested on what are the operational costs for the volunteer stations. Going to page number two, the next thing is you had asked for a conceptual drawing of the Sally Port, that's found on page nineteen. Well, nineteen is a memo, but then twenty and twenty-one are some conceptual drawings of where the Sally Port would be added on to the back of the courthouse. And you can see it, it's not colored, it's off to the back, it's on page twenty, it's in the top right-hand corner, it just says outline of Sally Port addition. It hasn't been designed, so there's no more than the outline that you see there. Item number thirty-four, which is an explanation of municipal debt, you already received that, and it's in again. Item number thirty-five, which is county employees per capita, we have updated that with additional information requested. I'm going to look on page twenty-two first.
Twenty-six.
Twenty-six is the information you previously received, and we have updated it with additional information later on in the handout, so we'll go. On number thirty-six, you received this information thirty-six, thirty-seven, thirty-eight, thirty-nine, and forty, you received this information from Dr. Jones last week. And then item number forty-one, which is a clarification of the calculation that Powhatan County Public Schools is required to match, the 1.5, that's on page thirty-two in an email.
Pause there.
Okay. On page forty-four, what would the effect on the CIP if the tax, that was already handed out to you, that's on page thirty-six.
Can we go back to that item on page thirty-two? First, before we move off, I'd like to thank David and Barry for participating on Thursday on, in that conference call with two school board members and Larry and stuff, thank you all for doing that. All right, go.
Item number forty-two on page thirty-six, you'd already received that information last week. The same thing with item number forty-five, and item number forty-six, which are found on thirty-seven, and thirty-eight and thirty-nine. And also, item number forty-eight is found on page forty, you also received that information last week. And then item number fifty, expand the employees per capita chart to show the number of sheriffs in patrol. And so if you look on page forty-one, we did expand that, and we have shown, I'm on page forty-one, I'm just going through Powhatan, we show sheriff, all other, sheriff in patrol, dispatch, animal control, and the two that we added from the one that you saw last time is right before all other county, we broke out fire and rescue, and we broke out library, so that you can compare those with the other jurisdictions. And then if you go to page forty-three, the information that Mr. Norvick had requested, which shows you the percent of patrol to total sheriff, I believe Mr. Williams asked for that, so what is the percent of the patrol staff to the total sheriff staff? And this total sheriff staff does not include dispatch or animal control. And then how many patrol deputies per square mile is also shown on page forty-four. And I want you to know that the data, we were using two different data sources when you look at the sheriff's chart, and when you look at this chart, the chart that my staff was using was prior year, the latest caffir, which was June thirtieth of two thousand and fourteen, and she was also using some FY-15 budgets, and I understand that the sheriff made phone calls and actually talked about the actual sheriffs. The next item is item number fifty-four, which is to schedule a conference call, and that was just information on the conference call. And then one item that is not in here, starts on page, starts on page fifty-one, this was information that was distributed to you by our fire and rescue chief singer, and it's the information that he is providing to the state on the organization of our fire and rescue department. So there are a couple of items which staff is seeking clarification on. We have ongoing noted, we have workshops scheduled, so I did want to point out some of the workshops that are scheduled. And one of the, I'm back on item number seventeen and eighteen. On May eighteenth, it's who has access to ball fields, who pays to use ball fields, and how do local governments handle this, other local governments handle this? We've scheduled that for May eighteenth. Also scheduled for May eighteenth is a workshop on litter, trash, and debris. And also scheduled for May eighteenth, item number fifty-three is amending your bylaws for citizen public comment time. And then, we need, staff is asking for clarification on item number forty-seven and item number Now, there's some information that you requested that's not in this handout, and that is because in this hand, we've referenced other pages. So if you look at item number thirty-two, analysis of prior years, that's found on two dash thirty-one, and I'm going to go over that next. And then, starting on page fifty-seven, fifty-eight, and fifty-nine, that was information that you asked to have ready for the meeting with the school board on April first, and I told you I would have it for you this evening, and that is in your book on page six dash fourteen, and I will be going over that with you also. So if there are not any questions on the request for information, I am going to go into section two, which was handed out to you this evening.
It was put in our...
So it was put in your book, and it's section two, and it starts two dash thirty-one, this is additional information on two dash thirty-one. So if we did not take out your previous two dash thirty-one, you may have two page two dash thirty-ones. And this is just a reminder that next Monday, April sixth, that you will be voting on your personal property tax rates. We're not recommending any increases to personal property tax rates, we are recommending a decrease to personal property tax rates for disabled veterans and for volunteer fire and rescue personnel. So starting on page two dash thirty-two, this was distributed on three dash twenty-three, and at that time, I was asked if I would please expand two dash two and two dash four, et cetera, to include a column which was the increase or decrease from the FY, the difference between, excuse me, the FY-15 adopted or amended and the FY-15 estimate. So before we go into that, what I did for you on page two dash thirty-three, because two dash thirty-three, along with page one dash eight, have raised a lot of questions, I've provided you with pages where you will find this information. So again, I'm looking at two dash thirty-three, everything highlighted in yellow are various page numbers where you're going to find this information. So this takes the FY-14 adopted, which is column A, compares it to the FY-15 adopted, which is column B, so column C is B minus A, the fifteen adopted minus the fourteen adopted. And those numbers that you see there are the numbers that I did do, presented in my PowerPoint presentation a year ago, when I said to you, for fifteen, we see real estate taxes decreasing by fifty-two thousand five hundred dollars, we see personal property taxes increasing by one million fifty-two thousand dollars, and we see local sales tax increasing by two hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars. At the time that I told you that, you then adopted the fifteen budget, making those changes. So included in column B now are all of those changes, so that's why column B is one million fifty-two thousand dollars more than column A. So fast forward now to where we are a year later, column D is where we estimate we're coming in for FY-15. Okay? And column E is I compare where we are at for FY-15 with where we have in the FY-15 budget. So when I compare that, I've already wrapped in, into the fifteen budget, under personal property tax, an increase of one million fifty-two thousand dollars. So I'm in the middle line, total personal property tax. When I say we're estimating for fifteen, that we're going to come in three hundred thousand dollars to the good, meaning we're going to come in, our estimate is more than our estimated or our adopted budget, that means we're, we are coming in one million three hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars more than in the adopted budget. And I understand that there was some concern that in my, a year ago, I said we were coming in a million dollars to the good, and now we're only coming in three hundred thousand dollars to the good, and therefore we had an eight hundred thousand dollar deficit, and that's not true. We're coming in three hundred thousand dollars over that one million dollars.
So for the two years, we're coming in one million three hundred thousand plus dollars?
Yes.
Is the bottom line?
Correct. From the, now, these are from budget to budget. You have to remember that, yes, that's true. So then, then we have the county administrator propose, and I show you the page numbers that you can find, and then the increase from the adopted fifteen budget to the county administrator proposed, which is, okay. So then going on to page two dash thirty-five, this is the same that you see pages two dash one and two dash two, but I've added columns for you. I added the FY-14 adopted, the FY-14 amended, and then I showed you how fourteen actual compared to the amended budget.
This is what Mr. Williams asked.
This is what Mr. Williams and Mr. Hodg had asked for. They specifically only asked for the next column that's highlighted, which is FY-15 estimate over/under adopted budget, but I added in those other three columns also. So you can see what I had reported at the very bottom of the page on three dash thirty-four, the total general fund revenues in FY-15 are estimating right now to come in nine hundred and eighty-one thousand dollars over budget. And as I've reported previously, we budget on historic trending, and we also budget these estimates very conservatively. For example, the real estate property taxes do not include the new sheets, because the new sheets was not on the land book at the time we did the estimate. So we know, and we feel very comfortable with the estimates that we've done for real estate taxes, because we know there is still new construction that hasn't yet hit the books, and we'll be getting these taxes in. And then, so those are the columns that I added at the request of Mr. Williams, and then the same thing...
Pat, may I ask you a question?
Yes, sir.
I'm going from memory. The FY-15 adopted budget, we estimated revenues that were going to come in, I believe, one point four million dollars more?
Tell me when I, the estimate is when, did I do that?
With the presentation for FY-15 on the proposed budget.
That would be about right, because if you look on page two dash...
I think it was one point four because you used real estate, and I think the other thing that you used, personal property, and you used building permits.
You can see that on two dash thirty-three, very clearly, yes.
Yeah, but it's made one point four. So I want to make sure, so when we say that we're coming in using estimated year-end additional amount, so this is an additional on top over the one point four?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Because you took that one point, at the time I came in and said we're one point four, you wrapped that into the FY-15 budget. That becomes my new benchmark, I'm comparing everything to the FY-15 budget, which includes that one point four.
Yeah, just one natural.
Okay. So then, if you look on page two dash thirty-five, it starts on two dash thirty-four, this is the detail, oh no, I'm sorry, that's the summary, starting on two dash thirty-five, this is the detail. Two dash thirty-four is the summary of the revenues, and two dash thirty-five is the detail. And on the detail, I've shown you the page numbers of how we've come up with the estimate. So I'm on two dash thirty-five, I'm in FY-15 estimated column, and I'm about halfway down the page, and you see I've highlighted twenty-five million nine hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars, and I have page two dash fifteen. So if you want to look at how I estimated that number, you go back to two dash fifteen, and again, that, you'll see that that estimate doesn't have the new sheets in it or any other new construction that's taking place right now. Then if you go down almost to the bottom of the page, you see eight hundred and forty-two thousand nine hundred and sixty dollars, and it has an A, that A means actual, we've actually received the eight hundred and forty-two thousand dollars, therefore I'm very comfortable that my estimate is good, because the cash is in the bank in that case. So that's an actual, and then the estimate. So if you now go to page two dash thirty-six, I'm looking at personal property taxes. So we've already collected the two thousand fourteen, and we already have collected two million six hundred and forty-two thousand, that's an actual. And then we did an estimate for what we're going to collect in May, and we've estimated at two point eight, and you can see the estimate comes from page two dash seventeen. And then the same thing on two dash thirty-seven, page two dash thirty-seven for sales tax, that estimate you can see on two dash twenty, and two dash twenty following from two dash twenty, two dash twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four are all of the taxes that you see following local sales tax. So I didn't continue to put those page numbers in, you can just go right through the pages, two dash twenty-one, twenty-two, and find all of those if you're looking for how we did the estimates. And again, historic trends is the estimating process that we use. The last one I want to show you is found on page two dash forty, and it's three-fourths of the way down the page, it's PPTRA, it's the state reimbursement, that number never changes, so that's very easy to estimate it because it never changes. And the last one is on communications tax. Communications tax used to be our tax that we collected, and that's why we show it when we do our projections. It's shown on page two twenty-nine with all of... It's shown on page two twenty-nine with all of the other taxes that, that we estimate. And two forty-one, it just completes the page. And you'll notice at the bottom of page two forty-one that we're estimating nine hundred and eighty-one thousand dollars, revenues exceeding budget in FY fifteen. So then on page two dash forty-two, this is an explanation of one dash eight. And one dash eight, I've received a lot of questions on, um, most recently from the commission of revenues, seeking clarification. So I'm pointing out where I got these numbers from. First of all, the fund balance, I got that pa, from page one dash eight, because that fund balance comes from the CAFER. And I want, I want to clarify, though, you need to go back to fund, page one dash eight, because on the CAFER, you're going to see the general fund and five other funds added together. And those numbers added together is what ties to the CAFER. And I'm just showing you just the general fund for this. So the estimated revenues for fifteen, I show you the various pages where you're going to see that, that same number, the estimated revenues. Then we have the estimated expenditures, which comes from five dash fifty-two. And then we show you the estimated fund balance, which is just take the fund balance at fourteen, add the revenue, subtract the expenditures, and you get your fund balance. And there's a lot of concern that I've heard, because the estimated expenditures are much more than the estimated revenues. So I wanted to explain to you why fund balance from fourteen to fifteen is estimated to be going down four hundred sixty-five thousand eight hundred five dollars. So I'm on page two dash forty-two. I'm in the middle column that says estimated fund balance, June thirtieth, two thousand fifteen. And if you go down to row four, I actually numbered the rows for you. Row four, change in fund balance from the prior year, it's going down four hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars. That's made up of three numbers. Revenues are nine hundred and eighty-one thousand dollars over budget. There's a slight adjustment for thirty-one thousand dollars for revenue budgets, um, for revenue amendments for November and December. And it has a B by it and you can see the actual, down, go, go down to the bottom of the page, you see the B with the little, um, mark. It's for those two resolutions. And then C is the planned use of fund balance of one point four million dollars. The board adopted three resolutions to use one point four million dollars of the fund balance. The three resolutions are shown down at the bottom with the C. Three hundred and ten thousand dollars is resolution two thousand fourteen eighty-one. That's for the carryover process. That's projects that hadn't been finished yet and we, and therefore we carry that budget over from fourteen to fifteen, so the projects can be completed. And then you budgeted four hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars to come out of capital maintenance reserve. That's what CM reserve stands for. And that was for the capital improvement program. And then you budgeted six hundred and ten thousand dollars to come out of fund balance. That also out of capital maintenance reserve for the other capital, um, program. So on that first night, when I presented to you this page, I said, oh, that's planned use of your expenditures, that's use of capital maintenance reserve. But I didn't spend enough time on that to explain what that meant by use of capital maintenance reserve. So you plan to take one point five million dollars out of your fund balance, specifically out of your capital maintenance reserve. So with that, I'd like you to look at capital maintenance reserve, which is found on one dash.
One dash.
One dash ten. So if you look at one dash ten, you can see, I'm not going to read all of them. I'm just going to start at the fund balance that's in excess of the fifteen percent. And it starts out at June thirtieth, two thousand fourteen, at three point one million dollars. So we knew we had that to spend and you made the decision to fund your capital program. That brought the capital maintenance reserve down to the two million twenty-eight thousand. And we're estimating six hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars will go into this. Now, some people might say, well, why isn't it the nine hundred thousand that's going into this? It's a calculation based on what you think your revenues are going to be. We're always looking at what are fifteen percent of next year's budgeted revenues. So it won't necessarily be our excess revenues. Okay, so I'm going to go back then to two dash forty-two. What follows there for you is just copies of the resolutions that you adopted using fund balance.
Pat, what you're saying is we made a decision that any monies in excess of the fifteen percent that we wanted to have on hand by policy, we made a decision to move those monies over to these things.
Yes, you did, sir. Yeah. You, you, you have this, it's a part of your fund balance, but it's set aside called capital maintenance reserve. It's the part of your fund balance that exceeds your fifteen percent policy. And you use it and we're, you're using, we're recommending that you use some more to fund other capital needs. It, it has been a great policy of yours and it's allowed you to make repairs on a lot of buildings that really need the, the repairs. It's what has allowed us to now, once again, start buying and replacing our sheriff vehicles. It's what's allowed us to buy a fire tanker. So it, it has worked well for us. The other item that I have noted to explain is in section six. It's items fifty-seven, fifty-eight, and fifty-nine. And this is information that you wanted me to get to you. Okay, so you need to go to section six. And you have an entirely new section six. It should be right behind the tab. And, um, we had six, we had section six that we have distributed three different times. So with this one, we took all the past handouts. We've compiled them into one new section six. And every time you look at the page number, make sure it says March thirtieth, two thousand fifteen. So I'm looking at six dash one, March thirtieth, two thousand fifteen. No change to, to six dash one. No change to six dash two, which talks about your capital maintenance reserve fund and then how we plan to use that. Six dash three, there's no change. It's your debt service capacity analysis. Six dash four is your debt service. I did make the correction. This is not a ten-year lease term, but it's a fifteen-year lease term on ten dash, or six dash four for the fire apparatus. Six dash five, there's no change. Six dash six, it's no change from when we revised it on March eighteenth. And six dash seven is, there's no change from the revision from March eighteenth. No change on six dash eight. Six dash nine is what we distributed last week at the request of Mr. Hodge. It shows the taxes on one cent for all of the classes. Six dash ten is what we showed for Mr. Nordvig, showing a two-cent tax rate reduction in the real estate tax.
Pat, I'm sorry.
Yes, sir.
So if you go back to six point nine, just so, this is something I've noticed before. Item number seven, the class is, is estate class?
That's estate class, yes.
All right. And so all the number sevens, we show the assessed value of that property within the county, but we get not a cent from it. Is that correct?
Correct. It's not, that, yes, it's called non-taxable. That's why the, yes, correct. I guess we didn't note that it's non-taxable, but the line above it where it says total taxable, taxable, only classes one through six are taxable. And then you, of course, then from the one through six, then you subtract out the land use. So you total up classes one through six, subtract out the land use, and then you have the total taxable.
So are we aware of any place, anywhere, that asks the feds or the state to compensate localities somewhat?
I've never heard.
Or land that they've taken out of the tax rolls?
Right. I've never heard that the state does that, but the Fed regularly does that. It's called, um, pilt payment in lieu of taxes. They'll pay you a payment that's not anywhere near what the land would have been if we, if we, what we would have gotten. But they regularly do that. They do that for national parks. I'm not sure what.
Pilt, remember?
Yes, that's Henrico County is paying payment in lieu of taxes to Cumberland for Cops Creek. Correct, yes. Right, same type of thing. I'm not aware of any state agency that will pay a local government payment or tax, but I am aware of federal government agencies that do that.
So should we, do we need to put that on the list of pursuing?
Yes, first, first we'll find out who your federal, um, contact is. But would you, are you asking to put on the list that you put that in the legislative item? Okay?
I think so.
To ask the state to pay us pilt? Okay?
Jamie, I'm sorry. Mr. Chairman.
Yes, may I?
Go ahead, Mr. Tucker.
Mr. Timberlake, the one parcel for Fed is what? It's assessed at four point two million dollars. Do you know what it is in our state?
Please come to the mic, though.
It's a post office?
Oh, it'd be, it'd be the post office, yeah. That's the only thing I can think of. The post office.
And so the state would be the wildlife, the state park, the prison?
The prison, right.
Okay. All right, thank you. Sorry for the interruption.
No, it's okay.
Thank you, Mr. Tucker.
On four dash ten.
Six four.
Oh, we, six dash ten, we already covered that. Six dash eleven is if we didn't use any real estate taxes, what would be the impact on the bond issue. Six dash twelve, you've already seen this, what are estimated annual revenue increases. And again, I added the page numbers for you. So personal property taxes, you can go to page two dash six to see those estimates. And sales tax, you can go to page two dash twenty. And again, very conservative estimates of potential increases in, um, estimated revenues. And I only use three revenues. And using that on page six dash thirteen, you could see that you could fund, if you used all of your, these increased revenues, you could fund eighty-two million dollars for the bonds. Or if you use half of them, you would still need to fund, um, some bonds from real estate tax rate if you were to bond the total sixty-five million. That was the assumption on page six dash thirteen. So now, starting now on page six dash fourteen is what I believe, this is what you wanted me to do. So I was going to go through this a little bit more slowly. At the top of the page are the projects that I believe, that I understood that you prioritized. The public safety communication system, the Sally Port, the vehicle garage, which I've now separated out from schools and made that joint.
Pat?
Yes, sir.
I don't think we've prioritized them yet. And this was.
Oh, I'm sorry. I shouldn't say you prioritized them. You, my understanding is.
This is what came to us from your proposed CIP. And what I asked was, taking those projects, as they were presented, you know, to us, with the eleven penny tax increase, which we said we would take out. And instead of that, we said, we would take, well, we talked about using the projected revenues, half of the projected revenues and dial them out from, from ERIC, from the schools. And the retirement debt has escalated down over those years. And then we would take and insert the projects that came forward.
Okay, so I misunderstood. I want you to know I've done exactly what you've said. My understanding was that this, the group of.
We did.
The group of, there were six, there weren't, um, ten of you, there were only eight of you. And you said there's some projects just take right off of the list, which were the public works man expansion, the recreation ball fields, take them. So that's what I'm trying to show you here.
We were left with two project, we were left with two projects. By my understanding, we had two projects from the, for lack of a better word, general government. The one we moved to say it was a kind of a joint situation and then we prioritized the school and then the major mechanical for the elementary school.
Right.
So those were the projects that we said.
Right.
Were important enough to say, let's use those to, in the.
Right, that's what I was trying to say here, okay? Right. And then in addition to those projects that you said even look at, what I, what we did is we took the, um, vehicle garage and reduced it down to four thousand five hundred dollars.
Four million five hundred.
Four million five hundred thou, four million five hundred thousand dollars. It's not ten million anymore, it's four million. And that's based on New Kent.
Buckingham.
Buckingham, thank you very much. Not, New Kent and Buckingham. And it shows then the total project. We, we subtract out the proffers. I'd showed you the proffers before. We're also recommending that we do the, start the design out of capital maintenance reserve. So this is new. We're also trying to reduce the bonds by the eight hundred and ninety thousand dollars by taking this out of capital maintenance reserve. Now, the ninety thousand dollars for the public safety communications, you've already budgeted and appropriated that and we're moving forward with that RFP. But we would recommend that the design for the Sally Port, so this is just a recommendation. By doing this, it brings the bond down to, that we're potentially looking at, at fifty-one point nine million dollars. It, it's a reduction of what you saw. So with that in place, just a list of projects that I understood, then I did, um, the next steps as Mr. Williams outlined. So the next line down shows information that you've already seen before. Here's the amount from bonds that, here's the amount that you could bond, paying the debt service from a reduction in debt service. And you go to page six dash three to find that information. You've seen this before, that hasn't changed. The next line down, the debt service paid from Powhatan County Public Service Savings. I've always had six million in there and Eric let it slip, or excuse me, Dr. Jones said it's six hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So I picked up that other five hundred thousand dollars. So I put that in here. He, he said six hundred and fifty thousand dollars in savings if you had closed one school. So that's the only line that changed. So this is all new. But if you look at the fourth line, there's no debt being paid from real estate taxes. My understanding is, don't have any.
Mr. Chairman, just a quick question. I'm not going to interrupt you, but on the sixty-five hundred, is that?
Six, six million five hundred.
That's what I thought, six.
Because this is the amount of bonds that you could issue if you have the, the debt service on six million five hundred thousand dollars of bonds would be six hundred and fifty thousand dollars. We would take that six hundred and fifty thousand dollars of savings and use it for debt service, meaning you, it would pay the debt service on six million dollars with the bond. Yeah.
I didn't see that, okay, I got you.
Right, okay. So.
Pat, you said that you added in five hundred thousand?
Right, because Dr. Jones last Wednesday, last Tuesday said the savings is estimated to be six hundred fifty thousand dollars.
Rather than six.
Rather than six hundred thousand.
Right.
That's a half million dollars in debt. So that's the change that I made here. Then the next line down shows debt service paid from increase in real estate tax rate is zero. That was my understanding. I'm to be working on something without real estate taxes, so.
Mr. Chairman, just one other question. Pat, I think you backed up one line. The, the, the bonds debt service paid from increase in revenue, page six twelve, is that half of the, of the?
No, this is full. This is full.
That's full, that's full.
This is full right now. Right, that's full.
Sure, all right.
Okay. And if I was to do half, I apologize, I didn't get, I didn't understand that it should be half. So we'll, it's full right now.
It's full.
It's full. I, that was what I did. We can go back and change it to half. I can do something different.
Why don't you leave both? Leave it.
Well, right now I've only got one, so I can add half if you need half after we go through this. I can have half prepared for you. So now, now I've changed at the bottom of page six dash fourteen, I'm not talking about the number, the amount of bonds. I'm actually talking about how much cash do we have on hand to pay the debt service? Okay? So I've, I flipped. So you can see that, that six point five million dollars of bonds up above converts to six hundred. No, I'm, I'm on six dash fourteen, I'm on the bottom of the page. And it says funding sources. So I'm not on, I'm not talking about the amount of bonds. I'm talking about how much money is available to pay debt service. Okay? And in the year, we give debt service from three sources. Reduction of debt service, the savings.
Right.
From closing a school and increased revenue. So in FY seventeen, you have reduction of debt service of two hundred and twenty-nine thousand dollars and increase of revenue of six hundred and twelve. Now, those numbers carry all the way across, as you can see. So then I'm on the second line, reduction of debt service, starting in nineteen of four hundred and nineteen thousand dollars. And then reduction in debt service, starting in twenty of nine hundred and ninety-three thousand dollars. And in twenty-one of a hundred and twenty, and twenty-two of five fifty-three, and twenty-three of five hundred sixteen. That's how that works. So just a way to accumulate the cash and visually show how much is available each year. So then you're at the middle of that schedule and it says Powhatan County Public School Savings, per Dr. Jones, six hundred and fifty thousand dollars every year we'd be saving. That's available to pay debt service. And then you, I'm, you see the increase in revenues picking up. Okay? So that's how that chart works. So now I'm looking at, here's the cash to pay debt service. Okay? And I've done three different options and I'm going to tell you right up front, the first option does not meet your requirement that you asked me to do, which is don't spend any real estate tax. I'm, I'm letting you know that, but I have other options to show you that do. So option one, I'm at the top of page six fifteen, assumes that all the debt will be issued in FY seventeen. Of, for those pared-down projects, okay? All the debt would be issued in FY seventeen. And if that happened, the debt service would start in FY eight. And if that happened, the debt service would start in FY eighteen. So I'm down in the box, debt service for the seventeen bonds. And I have the amount that is available for debt service that comes from that schedule at the bottom of page six dash fourteen, those very same numbers at the bottom of page six dash fourteen. So I either have an excess of amount available, or I have a deficit. In this case, I have a deficit. I can use some of my prior year excess because it hasn't been spent. So then I come up with that net deficit. And based on the net deficit, to make up that net deficit, what would you need in a tax rate increase? And it's nine point eight cents. So that would raise the tax rate to ninety-nine point eight would be the tax rate. Then you go to the next year, and because you have more available to spend, I'm not gonna go through the whole scenario, you would then reduce the tax rate by three cents, bringing it down to ninety-six point eight. And then you go to the year twenty, and you'd be able to reduce the tax rate by five point seven cents, bringing it down to ninety-one point one. And then, in the year twenty-one, it would be back to ninety cents. So that's just one assumption. If you said, everything had to be done immediately, which is, I know we, we said that wasn't so. So then I went to six dash fif, or option two, which, this was my understanding that the school's top priority was a junior high, and our top priority was the radio system. So then I did just those two. And in that same scenario, the tax rate in eighteen, FY eighteen would have to go to, be increased by six point two cents. But then it could be reduced by three point one cents, so it went down to ninety-three point one. And in twenty, it could be reduced by another two point one cents, so it'd go to ninety-one cents. And then, again, in twenty-one, it would be back at ninety cents. And I wanted you to look at the top of the, the option B. And the same thing is in option A. When you reach the year two thousand twenty, twenty-one, and twenty-two, you have enough cash flow to be able to afford the debt service on that thirty-one point eight million dollars in addition to the fifty-one nine forty-six. So what you have is a cash flow problem from seventeen to twenty. Or, and then, starting in twenty, you can be issuing additional debt. Now, I know we're saying, wait, you're issuing debt in twenty, and I still have the cash flow problem. Well, the debt you're issuing in twenty doesn't, you don't start paying that debt service till twenty-one. That's why it shows it like that. So now, go to option C, there's another option. I can do as many options as you tell me, but this will, you can start telling me some things you want me to do. So here is option C. Don't do anything in seventeen. Do not issue any bonds, is what I'm saying. Issue your bonds in eighteen, and your debt service starts in twenty. And look what happens there. Because I have the eight, in seventeen, we have available that eight-hundred-and-forty-one-thousand dollars that we're not gonna spend it on anything. We're gonna put it in the bank to you, and then in, we're gonna do the same thing in eighteen, put that one point four million dollars in the bank. So that money, that two million three hundred and seventeen thousand dollars is available to pay the debt service in two thousand nineteen. And you don't need to raise a tax rate. In fact, you have some left over that can help you pay the, pay the bonds. Now, I know we say we issue the bonds in eighteen, and that means then your projects can't start till eighteen. But my assumptions, at the very top, it says, this assumes a twenty-year term. It assumes level principal payments, and it assumes no delay in the principal payments. And those are key, very conservative. But there's other options that you could, that we can discuss with a financial, financial advisor, so that the projects can begin in seventeen, but the debt is issued in eighteen. Or the debt may be issued in seventeen, you could potentially delay the principal, only pay interest. Or you could wait and issue it in, the bonds in eighteen and do bands to get you through your cash flow, if you needed to do. So there's options that you could discuss to come up with if you, if you made the decision, you can't wait on any of these projects to start them until eighteen.
Pat, just a quick question.
Mm-hmm.
If you did the bands, or you're saying just paid the principal, just paid the interest, is there an increase there overall amount that we'd be paying on bond issuance?
Yes, it would, sir, because you're gonna be paying interest, more interest than you would. And you'd have to weigh that over-
Got you.
You, you'd have to weigh the cost benefit. Do you wanna make that price so you can start the proj, is a project worth enough to do that for? But it would, yeah, but it would increase the cost of the whole debt, so. And I don't have the, I am not versed enough in doing the calculations to tell you what would be the increased cost in, in the interest if you did the bands or if you did principal only. That's why I would refer that to the financial advisors to do that for you. Other things you can do with debt, you can have a longer term. It doesn't have to be a twenty-year term. You don't have to do level principal payments. So there's other things you can do with debt that would change these numbers also. So, and then six, so, if you, if you know of any other scenarios or any other options, any other ways you want me to look at it, if you wanna wait till the meeting on Wednesday to give me options, we can do that also, so I'm, I can do.
Pat, this is, this is, this is a good start, because this, this gets us more into where we started in last Monday night.
Mm-hmm.
I'm, I would probably defer directing you to do anything at this time until we have more conversations with the school board and get into this. You know, like I said, every time I get a piece of information, I learn a little bit more. So, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Mr. Williams, I agree. Uh, miss, I would like to see the fifty percent, if you could do the fifty percent scenario. This is, this is done with the hundred percent. And if you could do the fifty, and then, you know, I was sitting here doing some calculation, would it, would it, if we captured fifty percent of the increase in revenues and things, what would it take to get to the number we need? Is it sixty percent, and are we okay with sixty? And those kind of dialogue. I'm like Mr. Williams, I, I've never been a fan of interest-only loans, but sometimes they're something to consider, but anyway.
We wouldn't wanna do interest only for too long. I mean, one year or something, so I mean, you're not gonna go years, interest only, that would, yeah. Or never do it.
Right.
I would prefer never. I agree with you, so. I also prefer twenty-year terms and level principal payments also, which both things reduce your interest costs when you issue bonds, if you do both of those.
Yes.
Mrs. Norvik, do you want another option? Didn't you ask for another option to be considered?
You wanna drink poison, or?
Why would you ask me that question, Mr. Tucker?
Because you asked for a reduction in tax.
Yeah, what?
He spoke to that the other night.
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
And, and I know you weren't here, but I like this approach, and, and I voiced this on Monday, but, for your benefit. And thank you for reminding me. I likened it, you'll, you'll enjoy this. I likened it to artillery, where you fire one short, one long, and then one spot on. So instead of just getting one sheet with one option, I really, really like this approach of getting, hey, option A, you do this, this is what happens. Option B, you do this, this is what hap, because it gives you a reference. You can see, am I making a really bad mistake over here on this option? And what's the cost here? So, opportunity cost is what it is. I, I don't require a decrease scenario at this time. I think the next step is to talk to the school board so we can laser beam in on exactly what it looks like we're gonna do, so we don't generate unnecessary work for you.
Okay.
But thank you.
Yeah, I, Mr. Chairman, I think I, Mr. Williams comments, Mr. Norvik's, and you, Billy, is, this data, we're getting much, much, or I think we're headed in the right direction with the other options. And then, I think like Mr. Williams said, we're having that joint meeting again Wednesday.
Wednesday.
So I think we need, things are getting, the more we meet, it's getting a little clearer each time we meet. So that's good. So I think we appreciate the options, because it definitely demonstrates a little bit more what we're facing. But then again, options to work through this. Not everything appears, it's just not one option, it's not one square peg, one round hole, or one square peg, one square hole. So I appreciate it.
Pat, just so I understand, so this would, this would assume the hundred percent, capturing a hundred percent of those through the, through the term that you calculated, okay?
Yeah, you have to take this through the term of the bond, correct?
And that was, the three sources of revenue were? Sales tax, personal property tax?
And new construction, only new construction.
No increase on existing residential building?
Correct.
Over the, over that term of the-
Only new construction, correct.
Thank you.
And one will follow, Mr. Chairman, one will follow. Those options, Pat, right now, though, they're, I think that's, is that the, we're still using, am I repeating myself here? I'm just trying to keep up with all the numbers.
That's okay.
Those options assume, they're based on the projections, I know. Or are they, they're using those projections, all of it or half of it?
All of it.
All of it, okay, that's fine.
And that's what Mr. Melton asked me to go back and do it with half of it. So I'm gonna put together half of it, okay?
I know we were back there farther where we had it, yes, okay.
Yeah. By both, yes.
You got a hundred, do a fifty.
Yes.
But we have another option.
We have another option. We'll have option A, B, and C.
Right.
A, B, C one or something, yeah.
There might be another one that comes out of there, maybe.
One and two, right, right. Then, on the last page, six dash seventeen, Mr. Hodge asked for debt per capita. And so I have to, I wanna clarify that outstanding debt is not just your general obligation bonds, it's your state literary loans, your capital leases, your lease revenue bonds, and your revenue bonds. That's what the outstanding debt is. So it's not just your geo debt. And ours, FY fourteen, comes right off of our CAFR. So this outstanding debt that you number here is different than the bond outstanding debt that you see a few pages back, because this does add in our capital leases that we have. So our debt per capita right now is two point nine. And then I made, we have decreasing debt as we pay it off. But then I just assumed in seventeen, if you issue the five, I went with the worst-case scenario, okay? That would bring it to four thousand two hundred and fifty-three dollars per capita. And I compared that to what, where Goochland is at June thirtieth. This is off of their CAFR, using their same debt numbers that I outlined. And then I compared it with Goochland at June thirtieth also.
Good, thank you.
I tried, I, Henrico and Chesterfield have a, have a lot of revenue bonds. And so that's why I didn't put theirs in there. Revenue bonds are supported by the revenue of an enterprise fund, like a water sewer bond, so. I put ours in there, makes sense to put ours in there, so. On page six dash eighteen is a resolution that was adopted by the school board sometime last fall, I thought. But I asked for the, the date that it was adopted, it's not on here. But Dr. Jones emailed this to me, so I provided that to you. And it, it talks about setting up a school capital reserve fund. It's parameters in it, so.
In this resolution, they ignored completely the previous board of supervisors' request that the use of the capital reserve would be for bricks and mortar only and not for school buses. Otherwise, you continue to use it to supplement your operating budget, and you'll never begin to accumulate the money that we had thought, when we initially talked about this idea, would accumulate over time, so you could build a bus garage and have the four million dollars already in the bank. This, this, this resolution ignores that completely.
Correct. It is, however, doing it exactly how we're using our capital maintenance reserve. So as I, I remember pointing it out to Mr. Nordvik, there's a lot of things that we should have in our operating budget, like the sheriff vehicles, like the PC replacement program, and we don't right now. We're not at that point where we have built up our, that part of our operating budget. So I can understand, they're in the same predicament that we're in. And I, so I could understand why they, in a short term anyway, would need it to fix their HVAC, just like we're using ours to fix the HVAC, to paint the library, to buy sheriff vehicles, things that should be in your operating budget. And unfortunately, when you have a downturn, they always are the first things that get cut out of the budget.
I hear you, Mr. Tucker, and, but also, you know, kinda discuss this with Pat a little bit. We are. I think this is an attempt, of course, we haven't agreed to any of this.
Correct.
In theory, we have not. We can structure ours and say anything we wanted to say. I would, uh-
My, my, my point, Mr. Chairman, is simply, this doesn't incent saving money or escrowing money in anticipation of major capital expenses. It becomes just another flow-through of operating budget money without calling it that. That's my only point.
Oh, I see.
And we, and we, and you're right, and we could, so if we, we can have a resolution that clearly indicates that, you know?
Well, this is not one of those things we need to talk about with the school board.
I agree.
Mr. Tucker, are you saying you wanna make sure that we're investing in things that are capital?
Yes, sir.
As opposed to slush fund money that, you know?
I didn't use that word, but yes.
I, I get it, okay.
Well, I think Dr. Jones acknowledged that, you know, that sometimes at the year end, that there was, because it weren't, there wasn't any incentive to turn any money back over or move them to a fund, that things were maybe paid forward that really weren't as big a priority as some of the capital needs that needed to be done, so.
Now, the way I read the resolution, I'm in the very last whereas, which is, it, I, my understanding is this fund would reside on the county's books, and the school board would make a request, and then the board of supervisors would have to appropriate the money.
I understand, I understand.
So, any, any spending would have to go through the board of supervisors. That's how I read this, I could be wrong.
Would the two-hundred thousand that they're proposing to set up, would that go into them in the transfer? Or would it be held back net of what we would normally transfer over? We would carve out two-hundred thousand dollars and keep it in an account over here?
You have to make that, that, you have to make that decision, I-
Because it wasn't clear to me where the two-hundred thousand dollars was gonna come from. When we asked the question the other night, Billy clarified, you know, after you shared with him, that, you know, they had been paying for some of it, I believe, over their operating budget in the past. And then we were paying for some of the things from the county side. So that was the question I asked, how was it being done in the past? Now I get another piece of information. Carson says, the previous board had directed that they do set this up and that it not be used, as Larry implied, as a catch-all for anything that you wanted to do, but it'd be dedicated for capital projects.
If you want, as a young person, if you want to have your own home, you set up an account that put money in it and use it only for the building of that home eventually. If you use it as an open checkbook, it's gonna be used as an open checkbook.
Bingo. We're talking about earmarks here.
That's right.
Really?
Now, on that, oh, I'm sorry.
And I would be caught, as we talk about, and you referenced this, and I'm not saying you're wrong, you referenced a school bus garage. We're now gonna call that a joint facility, so we've kinda moved it, so, you know? But it's still, this facility needs to be addressed. And maybe they can use funds, or ask to use funds. The way I read this is just like Pat said, I think it still sits in a fund, and it says, the request of the board of supervisors appropriation. So, I mean, I'll kinda read that, that way. It sits there, and we would have to appropriate it.
Makes it too easy for them to ask for, and us to say, yeah, go ahead and use it. That's, that's all I'm getting at. If you, if you wanna build a house, let's save for the house. That's all I'm saying.
I do know, then, my discussions with, with Dr. Jones is, when you look at the, their CIP, which I'm looking on page fifty-eight of our CIP. And one of the things that they have in here is their support vehicles. And they need to replace support vehicles for a hundred and fifty-two thousand dollars next year. They put it in their CIP because they don't have it in their operating. And I had said to Dr. Jones, you know, I, there's some things I can work with you with and try and get funded, like the school buses. Can, is there anything that you can pick up? And he said, I'll, I'm gonna figure out a way to do the support vehicles. And so, I'm not saying that that's what the two-hundred was for. That was the conversation that I had with them, is there some things? And what I understood him to say last week, that there's gonna be some things, like that asphalt and curbing maintenance, that they're gonna now pick up and not put this. So I know that there's some capital things that are on this list, and so, that he has agreed that he'll pay for.
We're having a conversation here that we need to have it with them.
And we need to have it with them.
But, but part of the, part of the issue is, we're trying to say it's either all or none. So let's say they have two-hundred thousand dollars. We let them use two-hundred thousand dollars of the leftover money to do cars, but we say fifty percent of that money is going into bricks and mortar escrow account. End of discussion. So have it both ways. Okay, I'm done.
Okay.
Great dialogue. Thank you, Mr. Tucker.
Okay, the next item is seven D, which is personnel.
Excuse me, do we have something?
Yes, there is.
It's six fifty-two.
Mr. Chairman, I was gonna say, could-
Can we take a quick break and, and maybe grab a quick bite or a drink and go to the facilities? So, maybe ten minutes or so?
I need a motion to recess.
Motion to recess.
So moved.
Second. All of A-Raw.
Aye.
We can reconvene again?
Yeah. Reconvene.
We'll reconvene the March thirtieth board of supervisors workshop. Ms. Riley, if you'll take on to the next task, please.
Yeah, it was item number seven D, but we have nothing to present. We have, we'll answer any questions that you might have on it. answer any questions that you might have on it, you were presented with some items for the first time. I would like to ask the board if they would want to consider having a workshop on April thirteenth to discuss the job and classification and compensation study, that was a Monday night that you had originally had, we had a meeting scheduled for that night to, to work on the budget, and, so if you would check your calendars, we could, and I'll check with the consultant on that.
I'm out of the country.
You're out of the country? Oh, okay, we'll look for a different date. We do need you.
No, I'd like you to be there.
We'll look for a different date. I'll send an email out.
Thanks, David.
For a different date, okay. With that, we're on to item seven F, and this is found on page twenty-five. This is what we call the open items, it's just a poll to give staff, um, direction in what to advertise, the ad will be in the newspaper next Wednesday, but we have to have it to the newspaper this Thursday, so, or Wednesday, one of the others, so, yeah, okay.
Page twenty-five.
So we're on page twenty-five of the agenda, seven F, and the, um, first item are the, are the tax rates, are, is the board okay advertising these tax rates? And as a matter of fact, you will already adopt the personal property tax rates prior to them being advertised.
I am.
I'm fine.
I'm gonna wait, we're on, okay.
Hang on, sorry.
Go in, Mr. Orvick.
No, I'm good.
So the only, the only change noted was, uh, item number four, which is a volunteer fire and rescue of veterans pre, pre-property tax rate going from one eighty to point zero zero, zero one, which we had, which is the lowest allowed by law.
Right, right. Okay. And so now we're on to expenditures, you don't have to do a straw poll on each one of these individually, if you decide you want to go with, down at the bottom, there's a, a CA proposed expenditures, and there's a BOF proposed expenditures, if you just want to, give me a straw poll on a total amount, or if you want, so...
Do you just want a total amount?
I just, I just need a total amount, is what we're looking for, so there's, there's two options, the CA proposed, or the BOF proposed. The difference is the ninety-seven thousand eight hundred seventy-two for two sheriffs.
I'm all right with the BOF proposed.
I'm for the county administrator's proposed, um, budget, I believe that's in the amount of forty-seven million four hundred ninety-nine, four forty.
Yes, sir.
Is that right? Is that the, okay, so I'm reading that, just so I'm reading that correct.
Right.
So the BOF, BOF proposed, if we advertise that, and we choose not to fund those two positions, then we could still decrease down to what we choose to, is that correct?
Correct, you can, you can, we do, you can go lower than what you advertise, you may not go higher than what you advertise.
Mr. Chairman, I would just be in favor of the CA's proposed expenditure, or proposed, I should say, proposed budget of that forty-seven, four nine nine, four forty.
Well, Mr. Orvick.
So, Mr. Hodge, you're saying without the deputies?
Without, exactly, without the...
That's what Mr. Williams has said, too.
I know, we had a lot of discussion about that, we've gotten even more data on that, so that's, that's where I'm at on that, just to go with what the CA has proposed as a global number.
Short discussion, um, you know, I was the one that brought up the two deputies, and it's a high priority with me, um, in fact, the sheriff's department is a central priority to me. Safety, we've talked about this, safety is absolutely paramount, if you don't have it, you don't have anything. So, that being said, um, I've looked at several things, but some of it just came today, uh, let me see here, the information you got for me, I hadn't seen until today, um, about sheriff patrol, Palatane compared to Goochland, compared to New Kent, this was all on the handout we got that looks like this on the front? And if, we may as well do this together, if you look on page forty-one? Let's just talk about this real quick, since this is a workshop, doesn't have to be too formal, I'm looking, uh, the important thing to me is sheriffs on patrol, somebody that's got hands on a steering wheel, out there keeping us safe, and my gut feeling, and from talking with, I've now talked with, uh, not only Sheriff Neil, but I've talked to a total of six, no, five deputies in different capacities, both administrative, uh, school resource, and driving a beat, so I've been taking the temperature, if you will, of several people to try to get a, kind of a full-orb view of, um, what the ground troops that work in the sheriff's department are feeling, and my gut feeling was, we didn't have enough coverage, and it was verified verbally by several people, and now I'm looking across at these numbers, and this is telling me kind of the same thing, if you look under sheriff patrol, that's the one I'm most concerned about, you see, um, FTE per thousand citizens, and we've got point seven four of an officer in Palatane, Goochland, they've got more, New Kent, they've got more, turn the page.
Neil, your hands left.
Page forty-two.
So, you know, we're looking at Fluvana, they've got a little less, Hanover's got considerably more, Louisa, a little bit less, um, and then I go on to forty-three, and I'm looking at Amelia, little tiny bit less, Cumberland considerably more, um, so, not as bad as some, but not as good as others, and, uh, I, I will second my stand that I think we need more deputies on patrol, so the question is, how do you do that? And one way, which was the assumed way when I first said it, was, well, we're gonna have to allocate money to this, so, one way is to take it out of the, the general fund, and just throw money at this issue, and fund a couple deputies. As I talk more with people, um, speaking with both administrative and people outside the sheriff's office, we've got a retirement coming up, and that retirement is worth, make sure I get the numbers right, um, somewhere around ninety-eight thousand dollars, possibly with, uh, family health coverage, a hundred and five thousand a year, there's two deputies right there, um, unless I'm mistaken, that's certainly one solid deputy, and perhaps another one maybe a few months down the road from there, so, just talking about this fiscal year, I am in favor of trying to find ways without spending new money to fund needs, so for example, attrition and efficiency, that's the best way to fund anything, um, if you've got somebody retiring, then that frees up salary money, and somebody new can come in, you haven't increased employees, we haven't taken anything out of the general fund, it just took care of itself, and I'm seeing a, a possible pathway here for that to happen. We can't micromanage the sheriff's department, I, I'm not going to tell them where to put their money and how to manage their people, and here, we're giving you this chunk of money, I want you to allocate it this way, this way, I'm not going to micromanage them, but I have a sense here that with a retirement, and if they're smart, by making sure they're not top-heavy, and making sure that nobody's sitting in admin that can be sitting behind the wheel of a car, um, I think they could probably get their two deputies just by attrition and efficiency, so, I am not backing away from the need for two more deputies on patrol, I seriously think we need that, and I think most of the people in the sheriff's department would agree. The way to pay for it, my opinion has, shall we say, been broadened a little bit with new information, and I think we can peel off, the way I'm seeing things right now, I think we can peel off that money, um, on the BOF side here, and just go with the county administrator, county administrator proposed, um, without the ninety-seven thousand in there, and now I turn it over for further discussion, so, I'm actually looking at the left-hand column right now as my preferred way, knowing that we can still do two deputies, so we can toss that around for a second, if you like.
Mr. Orvick, I hear you, and I, I listened, um, to you at the workshops, talk about the need, this clearly demonstrates to me, when you look at all other patrol, dispatch, animal control, all that data's great data, again, we can't get into managing the sheriff's department, no different than, uh, if you look what the schools did this year, they, they basically are eliminating position in middle to upper leadership, and funding those, using that salary to fund some teachers and teachers' aides positions, so, again, the efficiencies are, are, are good there, and, and to, uh, to do that without ask, allocating additional money is also a good thing, we've done the same thing in the county, as we were working through some of the challenges we had, so, um, I do think there is, you know, need for the additional patrol people, uh, I am, I, I will support the, uh, the forty-seven thousand four ninety-nine, four forty, which was the county administrator's, um, proposed budget, in hopes that the sheriff would be able to, to, uh, take a look at that retirement, use that, and, and more foot soldiers on the street, so to speak.
And just to add, we forgot to do one page, if, if you want to, you can refer to page forty-four, just one more page passed, just for complete information on what we've been handed tonight, so the handout from tonight on page forty-four, that one was pretty telling to me, um, I'm not so much concerned with square mileage, because square mileage in Richmond City, uh, is going to be a huge difference from square mileage here or in the west panhandle of Texas, so I'm not that concerned with...
They got more deer in Richmond than...
Yeah, excellent, excellent comparison, but the first column is, is very telling to me, it's, it, again, it just reemphasizes the need for deputies, percent patrol to total sheriff, um, thirty-six percent for Palatane, Goochland higher, New Kent, a little bit lower than us, you got Fluvana higher, Hanover higher, Louisa higher, Amelia, a little bit lower, Cumberland, um, much higher, so, percent of patrol to the total sheriffs, uh, that, to me, that's an unacceptably low number right there, um, so, here's my stand, I want the two deputies, that, that's where I come down, I, I think we need two deputies, with the information I've received since the first time I brought this up a few weeks ago, um, with a strong nudge, nudge elbow to the sheriff's department, that we expect them to manage their money well, efficiently, and we think that there is a possibility they can get coverage by taking advantage of a retirement and more efficiently operating, I'm comfortable with the county administrator number, um, if y'all want to guarantee those two positions absolutely, then we pay the money, and that would be column B, but I'm, I'm prepared to accept column A, I'm prepared for that, and I can sleep at night confident that the sheriff's department will work that out, and I know the money's there.
Mr. Nordvik, the board of supervisors adopts a staffing plan, and it is in the staffing plan where the board of supervisors approves the number of positions and exactly what positions are, so the board does have the opportunity to, um...
Encourage.
Encourage, well, it would be more than encourage, because we can't, um, hire anyone unless you've authorized it, so you do have, and have...
We could mandate it.
You could mandate it, in your staffing plan, that's correct.
Right, and, and I think if we get in extremis, you do things like that, but I don't really want to manage their department for them, but thank you for telling me, I do have a question about that, though, the staffing plan, uh, since I'm the new guy, how often do we, uh, update that? And are there certain times, like quarters, that we're allowed to make changes, or how does that work?
You, you, you adopt it every year, and then if a department comes forward to you, makes a request to amend it, and you approve their amendment, you, you could do that whenever a department comes forward and makes that request.
Okay.
So you do it, and, you've, you've amended it twice now this year, you amended it for the circuit court clerk who came and asked for a full-time position, and then you amended it for the sheriff's office who asked for two part-time positions, two or three part-time positions for the court, so, you've, you've amended it twice this year.
Okay, thank you.
So it looks like you kind of have your marching order.
I got that, I might draw from here, okay, so then on page twenty-six, there's no changes, so it is, on, on all these different funds, on twenty-six, is this the amount I should advertise, I see no changes. We will make that slight change, Mr. Hodge, that you see that you requested on, on the fire and rescue fund, in the middle, it's just moving from one line up, it doesn't, it doesn't affect the ad, but we're gonna make that in the, in the detailed line item for you, so, I didn't, I don't need a, a straw poll on each one of these, if you just want to say on everything on, or, or any...
Okay.
Okay?
David, you okay?
Yep.
Larry?
Um, just one minute?
That's fine, take your time.
Twenty, twenty-six of the agenda.
I'm fine.
Larry's good?
It's just the social, it's social services, CSA grants, fire and rescue, SRP, and capital projects?
I've got a question about the SRP fund, but I'll ask that to Wednesday night with the schools.
Okay, this SRP fund is on our books, also not the schools' books, yeah. And now I'm on page twenty-seven, which is the utilities, the school operating fund, and the school food service fund.
I'm good.
Okay? I have two, okay, is three?
Good.
Okay.
I'm good.
Okay, all right, so, thank you, gentlemen, we know what we're going to advertise.
Perfect.
We're done with item seven, staff is complete with seven.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Since we're still barely in item seven and its discussion items, before you open it up to public comment, um, is this the right time to talk about the conference call that y'all had with Susan Hoagie and...
Absolutely, absolutely, if you want to talk about it, we, we kind of handle it back in seven, uh...
Right, I saw the handout, I said, you know, but if, if you don't mind, I'd, I'd just like to kind of hear a quick synopsis, instead of just read this, and, you know, if I have questions, I can ask.
Yeah, the quick synopsis is this, and David can certainly follow up on this, or add to, amend, whatever, um, even though most of us, when getting information from the legislature this year, uh, we got a lot of conflicting information at first, and then we tried to go down, and some of us tried to go down as best we could and clarify it, we know Larry had done, and some others had done, and David had a lot of questions as well, but basically, what we learned is, um, that it's really a two-step process, and it's unfortunate, because I think this issue needs to be raised directly now with our state representatives, we're gonna obviously have a new representative in the tenth senatorial district after the election, don't know who that will be, but the bottom line is this, is, and I didn't know this at all until I dug into it, and this is why it was very important to have the joint meetings of the schools, to ask good questions, and sometimes, some people might consider tough questions, but the tough questions are the ones that get answered, uh, and you may have to dig a little bit, and actually, what you end up doing is, you get enlightened, and you understand better what you're doing, and the two-step process is this, there was the, of course, we all know, we have an index that we have to give a match to, so when the state says, we're gonna give you some money, but you have to match a contribution to get it, I think we all kind of understood there was some match, uh, there was some unclarity at first on that, but the match was, our index is point three nine one three, and so technically, to leverage the hundred and eighty-six thousand and change to the schools, that's what the state's giving the schools for a one-point-five percent average, uh, billed as a teacher pay raise, SOQ-funded positions, our, our actual amount, if it started January first, would be that sixty-eight thousand dollars, so much lower amount, however, there's the second step that we were not aware of at all, really, um, and this is something I think this board needs to take up, not only on the legislative agenda next year, number one, but number two, I think we need to have, and maybe it's a workshop, or something along those lines with both Lee Ware, and whoever our new representative is when that time is done on this issue, because it doesn't help to have clouded, muddy waters between us and the legislature, all it does is create confusion, and it also, in the end, really in the end, hurts the locality. The second step process, according to DOE, the way the Department of Education interprets that law, I disagree with that interpretation, however, they're the ones that can interpret as well, is, the way they interpret that is not just your SOQ positions that you may fund or raise, it's all of your positions in the entire school district, and if the word average allows you to then do this salary compression, and some will get a raise, and some won't get a raise, some will get a little more, and some get a little less, and some get none, so, the bottom line is, according to Dickey Kent, or Kent Dickey out of the DOE, and Robert Vaughn, who's the, I think the chief of, not the chief, but the head of the...
Chief of House Appropriations.
Yeah, exactly, House Appropriations, I guess they've done this, from what I understood, David, was that they, this is just the way it's always kind of been, that there's this two-step process, there's your estate match, which everybody can do the math and say, okay... everybody can do the math and say, okay, I'm .3913, the state's gonna give me a hundred dollars, so I'm gonna give thirty-nine dollars. Not a bad deal, so to speak, okay. But that's not, that's not the whole story, as, you know, Paul Harvey said, the rest of the story. The rest of the story is, no, that's not true, that's not transparent, that's not correct, that's incorrect when it comes to education. So, we found out in that conference call very clearly that DOE's kind of always done it this way, the House Appropriations has kind of always done it this way, regardless of the language aside of the actual bill itself. And this is just how they operate down there. Well, that's news to me, and I've been on the board three years now, so I guess I'm still a rookie. But that's what, that was the update to us, and I think David and I kinda walked out of there a little bit and said, you gotta be kidding me, there's, you know, that's, you know, all the information that we received, and I know Larry was down there, too, all the information we received really wasn't the whole story. So, what it really is, is you need to spend four-hundred-and-seventy-four thousand and change to leverage, you need to leverage half a million, basically, and change local government to get a hundred and eighty-six and change from the state. Thank you for that clarity, or non-clarity. So, that's, that was the update from the meeting, and David can add to that or subtract to that, but I think we definitely need, on our legislative agenda, hey, if the legislature wants to do it that way, I don't have any problem with that, but speak clearly. Don't speak in mud, because what it does is, all it does is, whoever's down there in control, you need to have, be transparent, this board's been big about that issue, and that's not transparent. And, you know, after how many meetings we've all had with Lee, how many emails we've had exchanged back and forth, how many discussions we've had with the school board, and it took us all that time, as David said, multiple meetings, to finally figure out, this is what it is. So, the calculations they're using are what they've always kind of used, but it's news to me.
Mr. Chairman, I'll join in with what Barry said. What needs to happen, very clearly, is a conversation with our elected representatives down at the General Assembly. If you read the press releases where they take credit for funding and incentivizing a one-and-a-half percent increase for teachers and instructional assistance, it's somewhat disingenuous, as in this case, when they say, further down in any press release, the state-supported share, and they say that's a hundred and eighty-six thousand dollars, and then it turns out, we have to put up two-and-a-half times that amount of money to pull down the hundred and eighty-six thousand. Something's wrong. That, and I'll tell you something else, after the executive committee of the Transportation Planning Organization, the other day, down at the Richmond Regional Plan District Commission, I caucused with four other supervisors from all different jurisdictions, they were under the same impression I was. So, it's not clear. And we need to have the conversation with Lee, and as Barry said, whoever's gonna be our next, you know, representative for Senate District Ten, we need to make sure that they understand, you know, that the way it's being proposed to the public, and what's being said and taken credit for at the General Assembly, really isn't the total picture as, in terms of how it affects us and our budget. Thank you.
Thank you again, Mr. Raj and Mr. Williams for doing that. Larry, you got any questions?
I got one more comment, I guess, and I'll be bringing this up again Wednesday, 'cause the school board deserves to be in on this discussion, but I just wanted to hear it now so I can put my thoughts together before Wednesday. But I just wanna make clear, Mr. Conca, Chairman Conca from the school board and I went down to the General Assembly, I had been invited by Delegate Ware, and in turn, I kind of thought it'd be a good idea, so I invited Chairman Conca down, we decided to do this together. And we actually were on the floor of the House of Delegates in VIP seating, not the gallery, we were right there behind the delegates, sitting in a couple chairs, when they debated this bill and passed it. So, we were right there when they made this sausage, if you will. It was definitely put across, in my impression, as a quote-unquote "match." We then were in the hallway, and Chairman Conca had some questions about the salary compression in the school district, and we spoke in the hallway outside, and lo and behold, the head of the VEA walked by, and a bureaucrat that has to do with this issue came by, and the five of us stood there. And I can tell you with certainty, the five of us never had the impression that it was gonna cost almost a half a million dollars to unlock a hundred and eighty-six thousand dollars. That is not what we were discussing down there. This came across as a quote-unquote "match." And I think it was in the heads of everybody when we were beginning this process that, you know, you put in a dollar, I'll put in a dollar, except we've got the .39, you know, composite index, so really, we, you know, as Mr. Hodge said, we put in thirty-nine dollars, they chuck in a hundred. That was about what we were thinking, all right? We were definitely not thinking that, you know, you're gonna put in two-and-a-half times, and here's your return on investment, which, if I did a mutual fund like that, I'd probably pull it out. So, the process began very, very well. The legislation was not clear. It was not where a normal person could easily understand what you were getting into. And I just wanna say that Mr. Conca has been extremely helpful, communicative, cooperative, and whatever happens at the end of this whole process, Wednesday or going forward, both of us had the best intent, on both sides, to unlock that state money and fix the problem over there on the school board side, which does exist, there is significant compression in that salary. But, you know, we're learning as we go here what the legislature really means. And I definitely will put that as a priority this next year to ensure that the General Assembly understands that the local governments in multiple counties, they're getting burned by this. And they might even be implementing this incorrectly, which is really illegally, right now. And, of course, that's gotta stop. This is taxpayer money, and we don't wanna be negligent with it, whether we know, you know, if you get a, if you violate the law, hey, ignorance is no excuse there. So, we've gotta make this clear. And that's it. I'll say it again on Wednesday, when the school board's here.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Mr. Tucker.
So, gentlemen, all three of you, do you perceive that the General Assembly did it purposefully, or that they vote on something that they also did not know what they were doing?
My impression is the latter, having been there. They voted on probably, I don't know, thirty things that day, maybe more. There's, with three thousand bills going across their desks in forty-five days, there's no way they can be an expert on everything, and my impression was, they didn't do this on purpose.
Carson, I'll answer your question. Yes.
Okay.
Are we gonna take another straw poll here?
No, no. One of the things we also found out on the conference call, is the only thing that changed with this bill was the averaging that got put in. Am I correct, Pat?
That's correct.
This has been there for some time. So, the averaging was the only thing that changed.
Somebody added the word averaging.
Yeah, but they did. I mean, this was something that was added to legislation that had been used in previous years, two years ago, remember when we did the first two percent salary increase, our second year. So, no, this is, this is, this is nothing new, with the exception of the averaging component. But going back to your question, do you think it's deliberate, and do you think that some legislators might not really understand the actual mechanics of it? That's why I wanted to understand as an elected official in Palatán County. I need to understand so that I could explain it, and so I could make an, you know, informed decision. So, I think it was worthwhile what we did, for all parties.
Again, thank you all for participating and asking the question. One thing I'll leave you with is, at least the schools did handle that within the proposed county administrator budget, they didn't come back, try to use the monies that were given, and then ask for an additional four-hundred and some thousand dollars to try to fix their gap. They fixed the gap within the proposed county administrator funding amount, so I guess it's a plus in a way. So, that's all I've got. Anything else on the, on the funding amount question? We'll move on to the county administrator comments at this time?
Public comments.
Oh, excuse me, I apologize, our second public comment. Period, three minutes for individuals, five minutes per group. Charlie, you wanna come forward?
Good evening, guys. My name's Charlie Bennett, I'm resident at forty-six eighty-seven Bell Road here in Palatán, lived all twenty-three many years here, love it, and plan to serve it. I'm running for, what is it, District Five, Board of Supervisors, so, and I feel I am adequately representative, Mr. Tucker, appreciate that.
Thank you.
And I would like to say, I do respectfully disagree with Mr. Norvik on the additional deputies, because the added space in the road area, what you can physically see is very limited, you know, in Palatán County versus, you know, in a city or something where you can have guys on the beat and have a reasonable amount of additional coverage. I believe that an emphasis on public safety, or publicly provided safety, is overemphasized, instead of it being on the individual, because I've always held the belief that when seconds count in my life, it's, you know, police are minutes away. And I think that each and everyone's safety is best protected as a well-equipped individual, so. And that is what I have to say on that. And also, one other thing I'd like to bring up is, that it's not that big of a deal what I'm about to bring up, but it is a cause for some concern. There is, there was a community meeting organized, I think in, sometime last week, it was the last joint meeting you all had with the board, that was at Palatán Elementary School, and I believe it was moved to that venue, because there was a community meeting here at the same exact time. And I thought there was some conflict there, because you're seeking community input there while holding a board meeting. And I know that there were multiple or two community meetings regarding the same thing, so there was an opportunity to go to the one prior and go to the board meeting, the joint meeting. Thank you for your time tonight, guys.
Thank you, Mr. Bennett. At this time, we'll have, anyone else wishing to speak, please come forward. Not, I will close the public comment period, now we have county administrator comments.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We are proceeding with the refinancing of the bond issue, as the board directed us. You have not approved it, but we're proceeding with bringing you information. There is an EDA meeting tomorrow night, here in the Village Building at six PM, and also another EDA meeting on April eighth, also here in the Village Building. We have rating agency interviews the week of April seventh, and as you recall, we were recently upgraded, and the outlook is, looks very good, we've talked with our financial advisor on that, not for an upgrading, but for maintaining our ratings, so that's very positive. Also, I just wanted to remind you, the workshop with the school board, six PM, Wednesday, April first, here in this building. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Board comment periods?
One comment, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Saturday, we did have the Child Abuse Prevention Day here at the Village Building. Unfortunately, the decision had been made to do it outside, so it was nineteen degrees and very windy, it was absolutely miserable. But I do want to thank all of the people from the county who participated, social services, the Domestic Violence Task Force, the library, the sheriff's department, the fire department, Mr. Timbalake, provide the music, the court services folks, and CSA, all came here and set up booths and talked to people who came to talk about child abuse prevention, they did a great job despite the cold. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Tucker. Any other board comments?
I have to entertain a motion.
I have two.
One, Mr. Carson, or Carson Tucker was generous enough to take me out to Bellmead today, and I would encourage the board to keep, at least for now, kinda percolating in the back of your mind, what a jewel that is in this county. I had been out there, it had been a long time, and I'd never been given a tour, and I toured the inside of both the mansion and the school, and down by the river, et cetera, et cetera. That, that is something we can't let slip away. I don't know exactly how we're gonna use it in the future, but, boy, they went over a fan today. If anybody has never been out there, I highly recommend it. Number two, I'm just gonna very quickly comment on the safety issue and the number of deputies. I look at it this way, you know, if my eighty-two-year-old mother, who is not comfortable with a handgun, if she hears breaking glass at the back door at night, she is capable of dialing nine-one-one, and do I want the response time to be three minutes? Do I want that response time to be ten minutes? To me, that's just a no-brainer. So, I'll leave it right there.
Thank you, Mr. Norvik.
Hmm?
Any other comments? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.